All right, thank you, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 15th. It's nine o'clock. We're here for our weekly business meeting. Myself, Commissioner Kenyon are present. If you can go around the...
I am president.
Table, state your name for the record, please.
Beth Mon, Treasurer.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Bob McCall, Assessor.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Jennifer Hall, Grant Specialist.
Kevin Dittner, Grant Administrator.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Evan Aaron, Bruce Crisco, Operations.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Lieutenant, IT.
All right, and then on the bridge, we have Stephanie Johnson, Scott Coburg, Bethany Colley, and Stephen Omara. Madam Secretary, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are none.
All right. We will move now to unfinished business. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye? All right, motion carries. So we will have now the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP 22010, Ada County Fleet, Fleet Management Consulting Services 2022.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon.
Good morning.
The evaluation team for RFP 22010, Ada County Fleet Management Consulting Services for 2022 has completed the evaluations and the interviews of the top three candidates, and we'd like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Don't you think Rutherford should be in here for this? Drumroll?
I feel like he should be.
I know, I know. He's worked so hard on this for like two years.
He has.
He's been doing this.
If you'd like, I can read the letter into the record.
Please do.
All right. It's a letter dated February 15th, 2022, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP 22010. Dear Members of the Board, the Evaluation Committee has evaluated the responses for RFP 22010. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, CST Fleet Services with a score of 126.43. Number two, Mercury Associates Incorporated with a score of 122.01. Number three, Matrix Consulting Group with a score of 117.08. Number four, Fleet Innovative Technology Systems with a score of 46.65. And then finally, number five, Enterprise Fleet Management was non-responsive. It is a recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for RFP 220102, CST Fleet Services, as a number one ranked proposer with a score of 126.43.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Bob, this is just for the actual consulting service to go out and do the rest of the work, right? And how long do you think this will take?
It's a kind of a two-phased approach. They're going to come in and analyze what our current fleet is, make some recommendations on that second phase for utilization, rightsizing, take a look at our green fleet, and saving opportunities that we might be able to have. So first phase, assess, second phase, make recommendation. So 16 weeks.
That's 16 weeks. And they'll look at like car sharing, vehicle sharing, if you've got like people that are seasonal, more seasonal work than others, and they'll look at the whole picture.
Yeah, they're going to look at it globally and make recommendations for us. So this CST has consulted on fleet management with numerous government agencies, and I think including the city of Boise, so.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, go ahead and move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award RFP 22010, Ada County Fleet Management Consulting Services to CST Fleet Services for Management Consulting Services 2022, and they had the highest score of 126.43.
All right, and I'll go ahead and second that. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. All right. And now, so we'll move on to Award of Bid 22026, Ada County Electrical Supplies 2022.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the evaluation team for bid 22026, the Ada County Electrical Supplies 2022, we've reviewed the two bids submitted, and we do have a recommendation letter for your consideration, if you'd like me to read it into the record.
Please do.
All right. Letter dated February 15th, 2022, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 22026. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the two bids submitted, one bidder was non-responsive for not completing the bidder's bid form, and the other bidder entered incorrect percentages for their discount. As such, none of the bidders responded fully to the requirements. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the Evaluation Group to reject all the bids submitted for bid 22026 and rebid the project.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, so we had really a kind of a no path forward for this. We had a bidder that put in the wrong percentages and another that did not fill out our bid form, so we didn't have anything to really take a look at. So rebidding the project would probably be the best course of action at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did the company we currently use put in a bid?
This is, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, this is a new bid for us, so this is the first time we've ever put it out for bid.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and move to reject the bids for bid 22026, Ada County Electrical Supplies 2022, and rebid.
All right, I will second that. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thanks, Commissioner Ross, to rebid. Thank you, Bob. All right, we will now move on to resolutions. We have three resolutions. We'll start with Resolution Number 2721, and I will open the public hearing on ARPA Resolution Number Eight for Approval of Allowable Expeditures from the American Rescue Plan. Who have anyone to talk to that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, this resolution is for ARPA funds. There's, with the final rule, they have allowed grantees to select 10 million as a standard to provide for services. So Ada County is looking at taking advantage of that, 10 million dollars, for Ada County services. In addition, the resolution is for an increase of the Expo Idaho roof at a total of 630,188 as well as the Turf Club roof at the Expo Idaho for 305,494.
And I just might add for the record that that 630,188 is in addition to what we've already granted, the 2 million.
That is correct.
All right, if there's no other discussion on that, we can close the public hearing.
Just before we close it, Bruce, you feeling comfortable now with these numbers? These are adjusted, right?
Very much so. Yes, I think we have a good bid amount for that work.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other comment? Hearing none? I will close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2721. What's the pleasure of the board?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve Resolution 2721, it's listed on the agenda.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. We'll move on to Resolution Number 2722, Resolution Update Procurement Manual to Add Michigan Collegiate Telecommunications Association to the Cooperative Purchasing Organizations. Open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to testify?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, this is a resolution to add the Michigan Collegiate Telecommunications Association to our cooperative list. So this will initially, if you approve this resolution, will add them to our procurement manual as a cooperative that we can use. In particular, this is a telecommunications cooperative that will allow Stephen Omara and his folks to be able to go and look at the different contracts that are offered and available through MICTA, and if they can find a solution out there, they may be looking at Next Gen 911 to procure those type of services and products.
Bob, what would you say, how much money we've spent, we've saved last year using the cooperative method?
That is a great question. So we're trying to capture that number a little better this year. It's with the cooperatives, there's typically about a 30% savings that we would see over retail, but to compare apples to apples out there, it's a little difficult. But that's typically what the save, it's pretty significant savings.
That's great, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve Resolution 2722, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
We'll now move on to Resolution Number 2724, Sole Source Procurement of Updated Benjamin Campus Security Systems. I'll open the public hearing on that. So anybody wishes to speak?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and Chairman, entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've read the documents, and I'm ready to move to approve Resolution 2724 for Sole Source Procurement, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to some more procurement. Review of bids received and award recommendation for Public Works Project, Bid 22031, 400 Benjamin RTU Replacement.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon.
It's a Bob show today.
Yeah.
So far. Running out of breath here. Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid 22031, the 400 Benjamin RTU Replacement 2022, and would like to submit a letter of the bids received and an award recommendation.
All right.
All right, we got the letter dated February 15th, 2022, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 22031. Dear Members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid 22031. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Number one is Acco Engineered Systems, and they had a bid of 87,620. The second bidder was American Chiller Service, and they had a bid of 83,950. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for bid 22031 to American Chiller Service as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of 83,950.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and award the bid, make a move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award the bid 22031, 400 Benjamin RTU Replacement 2022 to American Chiller with the amount of 83,950.
I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you. We'll move on now to licenses.
Yes, Mr. Chair, go ahead and move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including eight catering permits and lending license and authorized chair design documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll now hear from the Clerk's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Kenyon. I just have a couple of quick updates today. Redistricting is still going well in elections. They're working on the voter database right now to make sure all of our voters are listed appropriately in their new precincts, and that's going smoothly so far. And then, as kind of a fun update, as you know, we've been in the top 10 best places to work in Idaho the last three years, and so we had that survey launched yesterday with our employees, so we're really excited about that and expect that we will be in the top 10 again. Good.
Excellent. And the Idaho Supreme Court, I guess recently ruled against the last redistricting challenge on the congressional boundaries, ruled against that, as far as I can tell, and so no further impediment to...
Nope, we're moving along as planned, and like I said, it seems to be going smoothly, so hopefully no hiccups.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
We'll move now to the Claims Journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated February 11th, 2022.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. We'll now move to Personnel Actions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the Senator Shippman and I filed with the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And we'll now hear from the Assessor's Office.
Mr. Chairman, just a few tax cancellations. The reason we have some of these coming through is the original application may have been missing some information. We reached out to get that gap filled, and we're receiving that back in. So these are just going to be trickling in as we receive the updated applications. We've got 14, say a half of those are certainly because of the Homers, Homestead exemptions that will be granted because of the new law.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Any updates on legislation to try to help remedy this? I think they're looking at doing it quarterly instead of just once a year of year.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, how much do you know about this? The reason I'm getting around to is, we had worked on some legislation to correct this, and Dave Roscheck had done some work, and we had sent that on to Senator Rice. Have you heard this?
Uh-uh.
Okay. We sent it on to Senator Rice November 26th. I had forwarded it to him. He said, "Send it to me when you get it. I will send it to Legislative Services, and they will put it in bill form." I got a call a week, last week, act of desperation, it's like, where is the bill? Senator doesn't know anything about it. Anyway, make a long story short, Representative Addus is going to carry it, and we have this language to get it corrected, and I'm just very confident that it's going to go through. It's, they're all just minor changes that will certainly clarify a lot of the questions. And assessors have been handling this differently, so this, once these corrections are made, this will bring all of the assessors in, will all be aligned in how they're processing these. For example, some, we have not been prorating the exemption because there was an Attorney General's Office of Advisor opinion not to, but some counties have been prorating it anyway. So this will spell that out loud in statute.
So Addus is going to carry it, okay.
That was the last I'd heard, he was willing to take it, yes.
It's a good thing somebody made a phone call, found out where it was, brought it to light.
One of the assessors called, just was like, oh, where is the bill? And it's like, well, I sent it, and it's like, okay, well, if you send it to me, I'll get it to somebody to carry it, and that's what we did.
Right, thank you for that update.
All right, anything else, Bob?
That's everything.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the tax cancellations. We have 14 tax cancellations. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for 2019, two for 2020, excuse me, 11 for 2021, and authorize a chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now move on to the Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I would just follow up on the proposed legislation regarding the tax cancellations. It sounds positive, there could be some uniformity in that. I would just note that it's not going to change the quantity. The number of cancellations are still going to be coming through, so it could affect some of the prorations perhaps, but it's still going to be, so long as there's an adjustment after tax bills have been created, they're still going to be coming to the Treasurer's Office. Right, yeah, so it'll be great, but I just wanted to note that it doesn't change the volume, so. And then with that, we're here for our monthly financial report, and him and Tim.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kenyon.
I have the portfolio for January here to review, and it was fairly quiet in January. We had, we had one maturity, 1.5 million agency bond that came back, and no purchases for the month of January. However, if you compare the month end for January to December, you'll see a big increase in our LJIP, and obviously that's due to the tax distribution from all the collections that we receive. And so here, comparing December 31st to January 31st, the LJIP's up about 66 million from the prior month.
So Tim, a question for you. Since we don't have a capital projects fund, it just goes into the general, like we've been putting 6 million, right? I thought we were accumulating that, not. What is the capital projects line item number 300? What actually, what fund is that, we're taxing? It's like the first page, one of three.
I see that there...
Right after landfill, yeah.
Commissioner Kenyon, this is a report that's received by the Treasurer's Office from the Clerk's Office, and so this is their books, and I don't know what the detail of that is. This is something that our controller would be able to answer for you.
Okay, could you find out?
Sure.
Because it's confusing if we don't identify, maybe it's the courts, you know, said that the amount looks more, it's like the courts fund, but when I see capital projects and things like this, then I assume we have a general capital projects fund, and we don't.
I'll inquire about that and pass the information along.
That'd be great, thank you.
In terms of our balances with the Auditor's Office, we're out of balance by a few items. We had a small one, return ACH $200, and then one warrant, $525. The big one, 92,56773, is simply the tax deed properties that were sold. This is money that was in excess of the tax deed, and so it was therefore was deposited into our US Bank tax deed account. It goes in there temporarily, and then the money is, checks are sent out to the recipients. And so that's cleared off now, but at the time, that's what that one was.
Okay. Looks good, thank you. And thank you for all your good work with Treasurer Ellsworth, and it looks like we're going to be moving forward with some partnership agreements over there, so thanks for that.
Certainly hope so, yeah.
All right, thank you, Beth. We'll now move on to, let's see, Expo Idaho. We have one interim event.
Yes, I move to approve the one interim event agreement, it's listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. We'll now move on to number 11, agreements. We have eight agreements. Is there any discussion on those?
No, I'm looking through these. Is this, is this the second on the Caterpillar? Because that was coming through one time before, is this a revision of that one?
The cattle purchase, I believe that's the landfill. I don't know what they're purchasing at this time. It'll be going up there once they find out some stuffs.
I'm sure that that's the opposite one, so I'm ready to move to approve the eight agreements as listed on the agenda, not as a chair. Send the proper documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll second that. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and with that, we will be in recess. Thank you, everybody. All right, um, thank you, everybody. Today is uh Tuesday, February fifteenth. Uh, the time is nine twenty-seven AM, and we're here for the uh Ada County Emergency Medical Services District regular weekly meeting. Uh, Commissioner Davidson and Kenyon are present. Commissioner Beck is absent in Washington, DC. Uh, let's see, we'll move to, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, so we're on new business now. We have a resolution in front of us, number two-seven-two-three, for the procurement of medical supplies on the open market for emergency medical services. And I'll open the public hearing on that. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I don't think there's a need for me to.
Any comments?
You have any questions, I can answer.
Just going out on the, on the open market on this one.
Yeah. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, Chair would entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve Resolution two-seven-two-three. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. We'll now move to the Claims Journal, February eleventh.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims. It's listed on the Claims Journal dated February eleventh, twenty twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we'll now move to the Personnel Actions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain unfiled in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we now have an agreement, uh, number one-two-seven-five-one-dash-three-dash-twenty-two, renewal of sublease agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and St. Luke's Regional Medical Center for Paramedic Substation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is our ongoing partnership with St. Luke's downtown here, and we've got our substation uh right down here across from the cemetery. So I'm gonna go ahead and, it's a great spot for us, and I don't think it costs us anything, so it's a great deal.
It's ironically located.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and uh close the public hearing on that one.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve Agreement one-two-seven-five-one-dash-three-dash-two-two. It's listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, do you have a COVID update? Uh, a couple of COVID updates. One, uh, the, the trend of transported patients is down. Uh, the overall trend over the past several weeks and uh acutely within the last several days is down to roughly the mid-single digits. Uh, and with respect to personnel, um, we had a, a really sharp bell curve, as I'm sure you're aware. We started with one or two and then ballooned to uh a significant percentage of uh, of the field. And last I saw, I believe, was last Friday, we're down to one person. So we've, we've come through that curve uh in a, in a similar way to, to other folks. Um, I think it, it uh easily can be said that the incentive program that we have, uh, that, that is being funded through ARPA, um, was really key to getting us through this. Um, that was designed to add extra ambulances and personnel uh to try and reduce the workload, and what it ended up doing during this time was covering a lot of um sickness. Um, I'm, I'm quite sure that had that program not been in place, uh, we would have lost some of our coverage. We simply would have had an inability to fill seats on ambulances, and some of those units would have, have been browned out. We have had some of that uh, uh during the last uh several weeks, um, but, but because of the incentive program, we're able to minimize uh coverage outages.
How many bad, how many um vacancies do you guys have yet to fill?
Uh, we just did a hiring, um, so uh I think with, uh, I, I think we're flush right now.
Okay.
I believe. We have one, I believe, one vacancy that is still pending. Um, there are some issues there, but um we just filled out with a hiring.
Good, good news.
That's right.
Especially in this market.
Right.
Yeah. Great.
Yep. All right. Um, I guess I forgot to men, uh, ask you to state your name for the record. John Blake, Maddox. All right, if there's nothing else, I guess we will be in recess. Very well, thanks.
Thank you so much, yeah. Tell the staff we say hello and appreciate their, their work.
All right, today is uh Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Time is nine thirty-three AM. We're here for the Board of Abamoor Community Infrastructure District Number One Open Business Meeting. Uh, myself and Commissioner Kenyon are present. Commissioner Beck is not. Action items, let's see, is, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Um, can I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Of course, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated February eleventh, twenty twenty-two regarding Abamoor CID expenditures.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we'll now move on to the Approval of Minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and that's it. I guess we're in recess.